On Thursday, March 12, 2020, Governor Charles Baker issued an order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. That auto was effective immediately until it is rescinded or the state of emergency is terminated. This meeting is called to order. I'm going to call a roll. Commissioner Collins.
Present.
Commissioner Stady.
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. We have a quorum. Number three on the agenda is an executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the dismissal of a county employee. I'm going to ask everyone who's not party to the executive session to please go into the waiting room and then we'll, in a minute, start the executive session. I see Attorney Peter Sumner's here. We're going to have Michelle Labadini stay on. Bill Buckley, the Commissioners and John McGowan from the Maintenance Department. So if everyone else can go into the chatroom, we'd appreciate it and we will. After this executive session, for which I need a motion, we'll be returning to a full meeting.
Do you motion to go into executive session?
Okay, yes. Second, second, the motion to go into executive session for the reasons as stated.
Okay, I'll take a roll. Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Stady?
Yes.
And the chairman votes yes, that's unanimous, three to zero. Okay, it is unanimous. This meeting is adjourned to this executive session. We're going to return for regular session. Thank you very much. All right. Can we let everyone back in or do they let themselves back in?
Bill's letting them back in now.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Counsel, thank you. Good to see you.
Okay, that was number three. Are we back? This is the Wednesday, June 2, 2021, regular meeting of the Norfolk County Commissioners. We're back in session after an executive session. We're on item number four. Minutes of the open session, meeting of March, May 26, 2020 for approval. I'm sorry, May.
I contacted Michelle with some revisions to the minutes. So I would suggest that we table the minutes till next week and they be amended.
Okay. On motion to table minutes to next week. Motion made in second. Do we all in favor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll table the minutes till next week for me. Number five is the public comment section. Michelle, did we have any public comment?
I have not heard from anyone.
Okay. Number six, facilities maintenance and the capital improvement report and Corona update.
Chairman, Liam McGahey is raising a hand for public comment?
Okay, I'm sorry, we're going to go back to number five, public comment.
This is Liam McGahey speaking through her coworker, Peg Comer.
Go ahead.
So once again, I'm speaking on behalf of the registry and maintenance employees. Some of the employees are inquiring about the possibility of the June, Juneteenth holiday this year. Can you please fill us in on whether or not that will be something that we will be getting or using?
I'm going to call on Michelle Labadini, the acting director. I know we were notified. I think it was last Wednesday that we were notified. Go ahead, Michelle.
Right, sorry for the delay on that. So Juneteenth is celebrated on June 19th, it falls on a Saturday. And on Massachusetts State Holiday List, it states that a holiday that this holiday falls on a Saturday and it will be honored on that Saturday. And Saturday is not a working day for Norfolk County. Next year, it falls on a Sunday, which will be observed on that following Monday. So I did send the list of the Mass Holidays to Kristen Sarose at the Registry of Deeds. When she inquired about that, I sent the list with the Mass Holidays so she could communicate that with the employees. As we all know, all the employees do not have emails, so I couldn't send it directly to them. So I sent it to Kristen on their behalf.
I hope that answers your question, Leah. So that's a date specific holiday and it moves similar to Christmas.
Some of the others, yes.
Yeah.
Why is it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Through you, of course. Michelle, did you say next year it's on a Sunday, observed on Monday? Why do they do that? Is that past practice, state law?
That's the way the state observed it. They observe a lot of holidays that follow on Saturdays are observed on Saturday. Some other holidays that fall on Saturday are observed the previous Friday. In this case, this holiday was not, is not one of the holidays that's observed the previous Friday, but when it falls on a Sunday, it is observed the following Monday.
Okay, all right. Thanks. All right. Very good. And then thereafter would be during the week or whatever it falls.
When it falls, the day it falls, correct.
All right. Good to know.
A lot of emails on this.
Okay, and you did inform the departments?
I did.
Okay.
I noticed, yeah, so I noticed that the Norfolk County Advisory Submission Meeting Subcommittee Meeting is at 1:30. Is Register O'Donnell's proposal of the two, proposal of, of the 2020 supplemental discussion or vote on their agenda?
On today's agenda?
Yeah. Three, Mr. Chair, if I may, to the question, the
Mr. Buck.
The two supplemental requests for miscellaneous capital items of $50,000 and $40,000 for book binding are, which we took up in previous meetings in the month of April. The Commissioner's third supplemental request for this round, the Commissioners are going to be speaking with counsel in the executive session next week. And then they'll move on from there depending on the advice that they get.
So can I, so you're going to speak to counsel with regards to Register O'Donnell's request for the $2,000?
Yes.
And then that'll be on next week's meeting?
Yes.
So they're going to speak with counsel? And then it will be on next week's meeting on whether or not it's going to be addressed?
And we indicated that last week, at last week's meeting.
Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Number six. Facility maintenance, capital improvement report and Corona virus update, John McGowan.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Once again, I am pleased to announce that there is no COVID update needed today. We haven't had any reports of, of any outbreaks of anything, which is good. I'm still doing the regular cleanup that I usually do, the spraying three times a week. And I'll continue that. I believe I'm going to continue it for a little while longer. With your permission, I'll stop it at the end of the month and I'll go back to two days a week. If, if I get the okay from you and at the end of the month, if that's all right with you. I'll do that. On the capital improvement, the only thing I have that I know is a problem is this rooftop unit. The units in Stoughton. I have a letter in front of me from a company that's the structural engineer for Mark Tochi. And what, what I read of it is that he hasn't been on the site yet and and he hasn't really, he's got a price here to go down and look at it for the scope of work. And maybe I'm reading it wrong. And maybe somebody can correct me, but is the base scope of work is 6,500 and strengthening, if necessary, is 3,500. To, you know, make it able to hold the weight of the, the new units. I do know from talking with Mike Osmond that each unit weighs about 1,000 pounds more than the one that we took off. And, and I, I believe that it should be beefed up, you know, the supports should be taken care of because we have to, like I made you aware, they want to spin them around and instead of having them not the south, they're going to spin them around east or west. And you have to make up that difference of the pieces cannae levering over the supports that are there now, that are there now. Which you have to put sleepers down, probably extend the weld some steel beams on there to hold the weight of the unit. But is my, my reading of this letter is they haven't been on site yet to analyze the existing structure to support the rooftop units. And that's something that has to be. Nancy has to address this guy, get this guy down there. Or Michelle has to get him down there. That's about all I got to, you know, to report on that. I know it has to be done and it, and it should be done this week. I mean, we have to do it. So there's no question of whether it has to be approved or not. It says here it's John M. Porter is the principal and he, I'm sure that Crossfield Engineering, they want a signature from Crossfield Engineering to proceed. So it's something that it's out of my pay grade. It's, it's up to Nancy and, and Michelle. And of course, you.
Okay. I've inserted myself into this process a little bit. I started, in addition to what we're hearing at our meetings, I, I had some discussions with Nancy last week. And then some more discussions this week with John about what he just talked to, about the weight, et cetera, et cetera. Before the, we were waiting for the the equipment, but I think we're fast approaching the time that we've got to sit down and get everyone in one room. And I'm willing to chair that meeting, not so much a meeting, but I won't violate any open meeting rules, but we have to get, get the the two engineers and the person that's going to install it and maybe even meet on site. Early next week, I can probably do it. Well, I can do it tomorrow or I can do it any day next week. And I'll have John come with me and then let's try to get all the faces in one room and say, we got to get this done. It seems going back to the original installation, which was faulty, we can't keep talking about that because that doesn't do us any good and it's over 10 years old. It seems that a lot of equipment is back ordered everywhere. I've heard that excuse because of COVID, but you know, lumber, every day prices of everything is up, but I mean, we, we, they're anxious to get back into that court and I think that this work can be done while they're there, but I think it's a reasonable estimate that we should have we should have been started to work, but if we can get it done between now and, and the end of July, I think that's our goal. So I'm going to take some time next week if no one has a better suggestion and try to get all the principals down to Stoughton Court so we can have some face time and discuss all this.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stady.
I can't support that idea more than enough. I think I'm getting a little frustrated at this point. It's so silly. It says, this has been going on too long, way too long, and I'm starting to get comments from my neighbors in Stoughton, I am, that are just not too happy with our performance on this. I would welcome a chance to go to the site with you. If that means posting a meeting, fine, so be it. I'd like to be part of the process.
Okay.
Want to do it yourself? That's fine, too.
No, no.
I think, I think having a meeting is a great idea, a site meeting. Let's get all the parties here.
I'll post it, but I'm going to suggest if we make a few phone calls and make sure that we have a date, I'll give as much notice as I have and then I'll post it.
Let's do it.
And we'll still have it, you know, if Commissioner Collins wants to come, that's fine, too.
Yeah, we just need to, need to get action on this and it's dragged on too long, way too long now. I mean, you know, that's, the courts will be going back to business if they're not already and we, we thought you'd have this under control. So whatever you wish to do, Mr. Chairman, I support. Thank you.
I will be back to you by Friday morning.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
John, anything else?
I'll make myself available anytime.
I'm not going without you, John. You're one of the you're in the, you're in the, in the loop, but.
Well, any, anytime is, anytime you name, my job is to be there. For you, I'll be there. Whatever, whatever time, whatever day, whenever you want. I will be there. Just let me know.
I'll let you know as soon as I know, but I'm shooting for next.
But we have to have all the parties that are involved.
Right.
There.
Right.
I mean, there's no sense going there without, you know, you got to have this, the structural engineer guy hasn't even been there yet, but I, I understand his position. He wants to get us an okay from Crossfield Engineering. Evidence, Crossfield Engineering must have hired this guy or was in the plans of hiring this guy. So that's something I'm not really positive about that, but that I'm sure that Michelle and Nancy could find out. We'll get them, get those two guys together and, and us. And let's get this thing wrapped up.
Please.
Okay.
That's good.
Anything else, John?
No, that's, that's, I had a new, I had the back entrance way for the employees entrance. I had that paved last week. It come out great. Got rid of all the tripping hazards or anything else that might interfere with somebody walking down the ramp and it come out fine. And everybody's happy about it, so.
That's in the rear. That's in the rear of the registry building, correct?
Yes, the loading dock area where all the employees come in through the yeah. And the movie people are parking in the lot. They were there last night. And they were there the other day. There's about, well, off and on is probably maybe man, I'd say within what, eight or nine, 10 trucks maybe. You know, they're coming and going. That's the way they usually do it anyway. They come down to pick up stuff and drop stuff off and pick up other stuff, but I just wanted to let you know that they're there. I believe they'll be there for another day. I'm not sure. Michelle could probably answer that better than I could.
Chairman.
Go ahead, Michelle.
It'll be exiting by 4:00 PM today.
Okay. That was quick.
Yep, that was what the contract said, so.
Okay. Last call for Superintendent of Buildings.
John, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Stady.
Yeah, real quick question, John, through you, Chair. Rentham Court, remember we toured it and there were some problems in the probation area. Is that all set now? I haven't followed.
Yes. Ceiling area?
Yeah, remember that, the issue we discovered? It was a little bit of.
Yes, I, I had, that was corrected two days later.
Okay, great. I mean. Nothing else. She had a list of concerns, but then she kind of changed her mind, right? Something she wanted to see done, right?
Yeah, she wanted, she wanted stuff done, I think in the, remember about the benches out?
Right.
Clerk, clerk of court sits, she wanted that area, you know, ripped out, but we, we don't we have other issues that we're getting into before we can get into that, I think, but
Okay, well.
The ceiling and the, the air conditioning duct work was completed the following week.
Okay, great.
And I haven't heard anything from there, but I, I know that you were concerned about going over in Brookline Court, but I believe, I'm not sure, but I believe Judge White retired. I think she has to retire.
Okay.
As of yesterday.
We've all been busy. Well, we'll get there.
Yeah, everybody's been tied up with.
I was wondering about Rentham, that's all. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, John. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I noticed, I noticed the Chairman of our Advisory Board, Mr. Connors Randolph is with us. Just want to say hello, Paul.
Hello, hello to everybody.
Hey, Paul. Always a good to see him and we're going to be together next week.
We have the Finance Committee on here, Joe.
On here today?
We have a Finance Committee meeting at 1:30.
Yeah, so we got to jump into that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Chairman Redd is there.
I just, I just see number nine and I was, well, let's do seven and eight because we don't have any business. And then nine is a letter from the Finance Committee and then we'll, we'll turn it over to you for that portion of it. Okay, number seven is appointments. I have none except the 1:30 with the Advisory Board. And number eight, old business. Do we have any old business? Okay, we have none. Number nine. 1:30 appointment with the Norfolk County Advisory Board Finance Committee. Chair Joseph Ridden, and I see the Chairman Connors, who I previously introduced. I want to draw your attention, folks, to a letter we received from Chair Ridden. I think last Wednesday and we put it on here at number nine, which will combine with the 1:30 meeting of the Advisory Board.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Commissioner, Chairman Ridden.
I just want to make sure that people are aware, this is from me personally as a representative from the town of Milton. It does not represent the views of the Finance Committee. It may, but it is not representative of the views of the Finance Committee. It did not come from a Finance Committee meeting. There was nothing voted. This is strictly for me as the representative from Milton.
Okay, it is in the packet. It's dated May 25, 2021. And it's some thoughts.
Yeah, Joe Shea.
Commissioner Collins.
So I have a question. So Joe Ridden, thank you for writing the letter. I appreciate it. I was prepared, had you not been on the call today, I was prepared to have read it into into the meeting minutes, but I don't know if you wanted to sum it up for everybody because you're talking to the Finance Committee today about it and it would be nice if they weighed in on it today during the meeting.
Absolutely. So there are two principal concerns that I had in reviewing the financial information as well as balancing that with the Abraham's Group project. One is with regard to filling any positions. In looking at open positions, I think it would be irresponsible of us to allow any positions to be filled currently because the Abraham's Group may come back with changes to that. They may come back with positions that upon attrition won't be filled. And I would hate to find ourselves in a position where we've hired people that, you know, their jobs potentially could be changed or even eliminated down the road and be saddled with that expense. The other side of it is with regard to the pandemic pay, if you will. I have some concerns there around the legality of it. And I'm sure you are going to be in touch with your counsel on this, but I just wanted to and I think I've mentioned it to some people verbally, but reiterate my hope that this will be vetted by counsel before anything is done on it. I think it's fraught with pieces that could cause problems down the road and I'd rather look at it that way. Again, this is my opinion. You know, Finance Committee can talk about it during our meeting, but I think it's those two issues. I think I'd propose a hiring freeze if, if I were to make a decision, although it's not my decision, at least until we can get the Abraham's Group project in a place where we plan where we start working on it. And then the other piece is not doing anything on the so-called pandemic pay until such time that it has been vetted by counsel.
Okay. Commissioners. We want to take this first. I can, I can answer the second part of that. We do have a meeting scheduled at our meeting. It's an executive session on June 9. With our Labor Council, Michelle McNulty. We did get a brief note from her about a week and a half ago regarding this recommendation from the Register. And off, I shouldn't, I don't want to use the term off the top of our head, but at that time it was her opinion that this is a negotiable item and it has to be negotiated. As a result of that, that's why we set the June 9 meeting. And that's what we've been telling everyone that has reached out to us. And it is, you know, it's also unique and, you know, that we have to follow the procedure, some concern about, you know, everyone, et cetera, et cetera. But I really don't, I've been cautioned not to really discuss it until we discuss it in an executive session. That it is a bargaining item. I believe that's accurate. I didn't think of it originally, but that's what we have these Labor Council and other council for, but we did send it right out to them.
Joe, after having, Joe Shea, after having
Yes.
reviewed the letter, I was prepared to make a couple of motions on the letter, but after there's a motion and a second, we go to discussion. If there was input from the Finance Committee, I'd be fine with that also.
But this is not the Finance Committee, the Chair.
Not yet.
This is, this is the FinCon vote on it. This is the Chair speaking as a person and a delegate respectfully from Milton. This is not the FinCon. And second, I thought, I thought the appropriate thing would be to wait until we meet with counsel. We're meeting with counsel to go over this. It's now, you know, it's a matter of collective bargaining. So I, I would respectfully suggest we hold off on any action on that, Peter, until we meet with counsel. I want to get the understanding of the legal implication for that. And maybe making a comment maybe is inappropriate. We're, we're deferring to counsel. Let's defer to counsel.
Okay, I'm, I'm good with that. I'm good with that, Jack. That's fine.
The other thing is, I'm concerned, I respect the Delegate from Milton's position on hiring and things like that. Certainly, we're making every effort, I think. We have demonstrated a willingness to work with our consultant and to be very careful in financial decisions. I think we by the letter from Joe Doria that's coming up later, we're looking pretty good. I think we're doing a good job, all of us collectively, everyone. Finance Committee, the Commissioners and all our staff. I think though, to say that we should hold off on hiring and firing and not do anything, I, I don't know, that may not be a prudent thing where if you look at item number 10, Mr. Chairman, you've got a handful of people looking to be appointed and looking for people to fill vacancies. And what are we supposed to say? Are we in a freeze? Are we supposed to have a hiring freeze at this moment? I would say certainly if we're looking to carve out new positions or new things, I certainly would hold off on that. But if we're going to follow this suggestion with all due respect, then we might as well eliminate number 10. We shouldn't be looking to hire anybody on that list. I'm not sure if I can do that. I'm not sure I can do that. So I understand concern for the report, absolutely. I want to follow that report. I think we're all on the same page. And I think we're all working towards the same goal, to make our county better. But I think there are people that obviously at Wallaston and other places that need to be hired. You know, so I don't know, I'm just stating, what's the point of number 10 if we're going to just say, let's not hire till the report comes in in July? We could do that. We could table everything until our report comes in, but I'm not sure that's a prudent action right now. That's all. I say that respectfully.
Well, as far as people on today's agenda, personnel matters, we have, I can only speak for the last five years, but I'm positive that it's been going on for a lot longer than that, that every week personnel matters for consideration must be on our agenda. I have been.
Right.
It takes a while to develop them, particularly two important ones are on here. The first one I'm looking at is at the high school appointment of John Martin of Marion Mass as Superintendent and Director. That's been going on since probably the last week in February. I know that we were informed in, in January that Dr. Quinn was leaving. That we all sat through all the meetings, that, that took several months. And that person's accepted our offer. The other one is the appointment of John Cronin of Hallson Mass as County Director. That's been going on since February. I don't believe anything in the past is, is, is subject to this. Based on the comments to talk about it next week. I feel that's, that's that's reasonable. But I do agree with Mr. Ridden about if we're working with the Abrams Group, which we are, and I see that I believe Mark is on the call, and I don't need to, unless he wants to. uh, the Abrams Group, which we are, and I see that I believe Mark is on the call and I don't need to, unless he wants to weigh in on this. Um, I think it's common sense that we have to look at permanent, permanent positions. Certainly department head positions. I don't, in my mind, think student workers, I think we gotta look at that and talk about it in general. Certainly, the rest of them, the ones a change of address, which would always be on there and I assume we'd always allow it. The others are student worker, student worker, substitute worker, et cetera. Um, could it, could it impact that? I would say yes. And that's probably, uh, the blue papers or per forms are generated much quicker for those. Um, but I think when it reaches the point of getting on this sheet that we need to act on it. But I do not want to, in any way, shape or form, talk about, uh, anyone on this paper as being frozen or not being hired or, I mean, that's how I feel about, so that's how, that's how I feel about today, but.
Okay, yeah, I agree. I agree with, I agree with both what you said, so.
But I think we have to look hard at, at anticipating or being able to be pretty open-minded from here on in. And I, I deliberately, um, haven't pushed the, uh, mock for a date of when this is coming, only because um, I have very high expectations and I'm looking forward to it. So it takes another week or a month, that's fine. But I think, uh, we should look at it and I'm willing to put us back on for next week.
All right, Mr. Chairman. That's, I, that's why I just raised it.
All right, I know.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna jump in on something. You guys, you know, let's talk about this a little bit more. So, uh, the issue with regard to the pandemic pay, we're gonna address that next week. That's not today. We're gonna talk about that next week. That's not a problem.
Right.
The second item though, with the hiring freeze, this is very similar to what we did last year. And, um, my thinking was after reading, uh, Joe Ridden's correspondence and it made sense. So what my motion was going to be, uh, would be that after today, so all the papers that are in today would be fine. I have no problem with that.
I agree.
But the papers after today, so the people aren't gearing up for maybe next week and maybe they don't get hired because there's a hiring freeze next week. I don't know. But I would say for the people after today, that we initiate a hiring freeze for non-essential positions excluding necessary temporary seasonal employment until fiscal year 22. So it, it's just a pause, but it looks like Eric has his hand up. I'm, I'm open to his suggestions also.
Thank you, Commissioner Collins. I'm just, I just want to weigh in, um, on this. I, I do.
I'm sorry, is this Eric Beckerman from Avon? Go ahead, Eric. I'm sorry.
And, and I'm speaking as a representative from Avon not finance committee. Um, in, in theory, I agree with Mr. Ridden on the point he made. I'm not gonna comment on the pandemic pay because as Commissioner Statey said, this is a legal matter. On the, uh, hiring freeze, I guess the two pieces of information I would want is what's the estimated time the Abraham's Group is gonna have the analysis done? And if we're talking about positions that are currently in the budget and are budgeted positions, I think we should go forward with them. I think, I don't think we should freeze current budget process in this situation. So if we have three or four positions open, I think we should fill those as part of the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget and then revisit this at the end of next year when the Abra- Abraham's Group has enough time to actually analyze the full staffing situation. Just my, that's just my opinion. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think that's what I was trying to say is, in summary, you know, like you said, forget the pandemic, that's, that's legal. I appreciate Mr. Ridden's comments, of course. But the hiring, only within the budget. We had a budget. It's been approved. And certainly if there's an opening, for example, in maintenance or Wallaston or someplace, if there's an opening there, we should obviously seek to fill it. But we shouldn't be looking at new positions or new hires until we get more information from a consultant. That, that's my, I concur with the Avon's representative. That's what I'm trying to say. That's all. I mean, I'd
Okay.
Hate to see a freeze, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Ridden, uh, Chairman Connors.
I'd like to weigh in on this in
Absolutely.
In support, uh, Mr. Ridden's letter, I will be doing the same at the finance committee meeting. I think it makes sense. We've hired a consultant to do some research for us. I think if you put everything on the table today and act on what you have in front of you, that's fine. Uh, but the hustles will be out of the barn, not at the Aggie, but the hustle will be out of the barn. If you don't put a freeze on now and act on the recommendations of the finance committee chairman, Joe Ridden, I think he's done a great job on it.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, before I make a decision, not a decision, but before we weigh in anymore, are we, we're not in the session of, of, of the, of the, uh, advisory board. We're still in our meeting.
Right, correct.
Are you, you are gonna have a session, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, I just want, that'll help me. I would like to do number 10 today, uh, not before you have your session because of my previous, our previous thoughts and some, some Eric weighed in and Paul weighed in and, and then deal with the subject of the freeze and I'll carry it on next week's agenda. Again, you know, the pandemic is on there and we may have more information by next week. I don't want to, unless Mark wants to tell us a guesstimate of the time, I've deliberately shied away from, you know, I, 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 I try to think it's gonna come around the time we finish the budget or in late spring, et cetera, but there's something, I, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't want to round, hire a whole bunch of people um, because we can't afford it and it might fly in the face of what his report is gonna say. And again, I don't want to get my hopes up, but, um, I'm, I'm, a lot of time and effort has gone into this and I'm, I'm gonna be, uh, all right, Joe.
Bated breath looking at it, but I don't want to have any confusion. We're trying to do it.
A couple of things cooking, so.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna have to pick up my kids soon, so, uh, for you, those of you in the finance committee, um, my kids didn't make the bus when they went back to full time, so I have to leave here about 2:15, but I'll be on the phone.
Okay.
But to, but to expedite this particular issue, um, there are personnel matters under item 10 for consideration for the commissioners to consider. So this A, the Wallaston recreational facility, uh, B, the high school, and C, the commissioner's office. I would move those all as a slate to approve, um, all the, uh, uh, employment increase, the employments, the continued employments and also the hourly increase in the change of address. I would just move it all as a slate for approval.
Um, okay, if that's in a formal motion, I'll ask for a second and then we'll discuss it.
Right, I, I would second it, but I think it's noteworthy to point out included in the motion by my colleague is an important appointment of John Martin as superintendent of the Aggie. And of course, our new director, we welcome John Cronin of Holliston. Those are two very notable appointments, but certainly to expedite, I'll second that.
Okay, and I agree, and I stated that earlier. I mean, those are around for months and months.
Sure.
We certainly don't have any issue with the change of address of, of an employee of the commission's office. And the, the the reason in the, in, for the student workers is based on the minimum wage, so. Um, motion's been made and seconded to approve all of the personnel matters listed on item number six in this week's agenda. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Items, item number 10.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah.
Now, I suggest, and this is up to Chairman Ridden, that you should open your meeting since we've gone 20 minutes beyond the opening time, but we've, in the spirit, we've been talking about it, I'm sorry. So why don't you open your meeting so we can?
Are they, Mr. Chairman, are they on our agenda? I don't see it on here.
Well, I didn't see it on there either.
I don't have it on the agenda.
But I did, I did see number nine and I, I think we, uh, there has been an error on the agenda because it is not here. Doesn't say.
Three, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Assistant Director Buckley, go ahead.
How are you? Uh, three, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, the, the finance committee, we, we, we've been kind of continuing to operate as, as we have throughout the budget process where we have supplemental budgets or transfers or requests that would come before them, uh, of introducing the subject matter together with, with both bodies, so we don't have to duplicate it. Um, and that also allows for type of dialogue we just had, which I think is positive. So that's why, um, we posted them concurrently with you.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I, I, I suppose number nine handles it because it says letter from Norfolk County Advisory Board Finance Committee. And if we put 1:30 meeting there, we would be fine. So I don't, I mean, I have everyone here. Dr. Childs is here, uh, Eric's here, Joe's here, Paul's here. I can't see if anyone else because there's something. Okay. Okay. Chairman Ridden, do you want to open your meeting just so we can?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman. And, and if I could please, I will call the meeting to order. I'll call the roll. Uh, Mr. Baldiff.
Present.
Mr. Beckerman.
Here.
Dr. Childs.
Here.
Mr. Connors.
Here.
And I don't know if Ms. Frigiletti is on. I did not see her. We have a quorum, um, not to be unpatriotic, but in the consideration of time, I'd like to, um, move through the pledge allegiance, which I assume was already done, uh, earlier and go to the letter just to bring that up to the finance committee. Mr. Beckerman has offered his thoughts. I certainly have offered mine. What I would like to say though is my concerns aren't, and I mentioned the county director in particular, and frankly, I didn't know that an offer had been made for the superintendent's job, so it wasn't in my language, but those are critical positions. My concern would be, uh, say, an, another position at the Aggie, I'm making this up, that is, uh, duplicating another role that really is, uh, kind of extra, if you will. And it could be that the Abraham's Group comes back and says, well, it should be this and this position come together to create one position. Just making that up, but that's my concern, that positions would be filled and would lose the opportunity to create some greater efficiencies and greater financial controls as we move forward with, uh, you know, this change in the county. So that was my concern. I throw that out to any of the finance committee members who haven't spoken or if you've already spoken here more or anyone that wishes to make comment.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I just want to, um, clarify. I don't, I don't disagree with the thought. Um, as far as new hires, I, I totally agree with that. I, I think I'm, I think maybe we're talking the same language in a different way. Um, you know, until we have a, a, a clear answer, like the Abraham's Group, for all we know, could take another year. And then where are we a year from now? You know, I, I don't know. I don't know what the timeframes are. But as far as budgeted positions, I agree with you that no new additions to staff. Um, but budgeted positions were put in there for a reason. From our, from the board's perspective, from the commissioner's perspective, they were necessary positions. So I, I don't know if maybe, I don't, I'm not sure if we're talking the same thing or not, but I do agree with, with the hiring freeze of any new positions or adds to staff. I think budgeted positions need to be, go hand in hand with the report from the Abraham's Group to figure out exactly where we're at. Does that make more sense?
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Is there any idea on the timeframe for the Abraham's Group?
I think, um, Michelle, I see your hand.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I spoke to Mark Abraham. We have a call with him on every Friday in the morning. And right now they're looking at, um, presenting the final, uh, plan in July.
Right around the corner.
Sometime in July. Could be the end of July, but they don't have a final date right now, but they are at the end of the process.
I would say, Eric, it's right around the corner that, you know, we don't act in haste. We wait and get the report from them. That's what we engage them for.
I agree. And I think we're close enough to fiscal year, the beginning of the fiscal year that we may be talking about a moot point. So yeah, I, I agree. If we're talking about within the next 60 days, we're gonna have the report, then we should just hold off on do, on, on hiring anybody until that particular point. I, 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 outside of the ones that are already in the works, like the county director and superintendent.
Exactly.
Yeah, I, I'm with you on that.
Dr. Charles, hit your hand up.
Can't see you, doctor. I apologize.
That's all right. That's all right. I, I completely agree. We should hold on hiring any, um, new hires except those critical positions that we're talking about. And, um, I would say even if it's a budgeted position, I, it isn't that I wouldn't, I would oppose backfilling a position that was a critical position. I wouldn't oppose that at all, but I think we should give an extra careful look at just routinely backfilling, um, some positions because that might be the place that we have the opportunity to not have to, we don't want to have to lay anybody off at all. So I think that's a way to protect people. So I, um, I mean, that's, I'm not talking about the county director. I'm not talking about the superintendent. You have to hire those people. There's no question, but it, it's not too much to ask, to ask, um, the department directors to just, to just hold on before they're backfilling their positions until we get the report back in July or August.
Uh, Chairman Ridden, Ridden, can I say one thing?
Please, Mr. Chairman.
So I'm gonna have to leave in a second. I, I want to read to you my proposed motion again, just to see if this says what you're hoping, uh, it'd say. So I would, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll make this motion after the finance committee meeting is, is over, but, uh, my motion would be uh, that the county commissioners initiate a hiring freeze for non-essential positions excluding necessary temporary seasonal employment until fiscal year 22. Does that mean what you wanted to say?
You have to include the other two positions, Commissioner.
They've already been hired.
Yeah.
We just hired them.
Okay.
I, I think that, I think that does work because fiscal year 22 starts July 1. I mean, that's all we're asking them to do is wait until after July 1.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna sign off here. I will be on my phone, uh, but then I won't miss you, but I, I did want to reach out to you for a minute and, um, I'll be back on in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Jim and Redd.
Carl, Baldiff has not had an opportunity to share his thoughts. Carl, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm there and I support, um, the letter as you wrote it as a member from Milton.
Now, it, it seems that the members who are present are all on the same page. Would it, um, and I throw this to the members. Would it be appropriate to make a motion for a recommendation to the commissioners or would you like it to remain individual? Mr. Connor says yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, support the letter written by, uh, Joe Ridden of Milton uh, with respect to the hiring freeze and the pandemic money and, uh, finance committee support and recommend to the county commissioners that you adopt the recommendations.
I'll second that.
Back I'm in. Thank you. I'll call the roll. Mr. Baldiff.
Aye.
Mr. Beckerman.
Aye.
Dr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Connors.
Aye.
And I don't know if Ms. Frigiletti is on. Okay, thank you very much. Um, with regard to the supplemental budget, uh, Director Labadini, uh, has updates and would just like to see where we are with that. Michelle.
I can take that if you want, Michelle.
Mr. Buckley.
Hello, Mr. Chair, Chairman Shea, it's, we're all here. Um, I just want to kind of, as, as we begin as a point of departure, I want to recognize Michelle and, uh, Mr. Fitzpatrick, who, uh, I popped in from parts of the weekend, but they worked through just about all of it. As we really try to tie up the end of the fiscal year, there's a number of moving parts, a number of transfers that have to happen. Uh, and, uh, literally we received two supplemental budget items bef, uh, after the hour of 11:00 AM today. So we, we continue to try to, to tie all of these together, uh, so we can get, uh, these documents out to the advisory board in a timely fashion, uh, if, even if it is by carrier pigeon. Um, so just, uh, to go through the supplementary budget request, I will bring it up and share my screen here and, um, if I, there we go. Hold on. Screen share. Here. Um, we have two supplementary budget requests. This will be the fourth supplementary, uh, budget for FY '21 from the registry of deeds that, uh, We have two supplementary budget requests. This will be the fourth supplementary budget for FY '21 from the registry of deeds that the commissioners have heard in previous meetings in the month of April and May. One for printing and binding, as he discussed, the printing and the sort of core function and the historical function of the registry continues. And with the booming real estate market, they need to continue to print and bind books. So there was a $40,000 appropriation offset by dedicated deeds excise, as well as a $50,000 appropriation for miscellaneous equipment in the registry of deeds, also coming out of dedicated deeds excise. And that was for shelving and other storage needs within the dedicated deeds excise. This morning, we were going back and forth, speaking of the Abraham's group. Michelle's been doing a great job really parsing through the technical limitations we have with the infinite vision systems. And a lot of there, there's been a number of advancements in the way we utilize that system and the way we utilize that system efficiently, so we can track data better in real time. So at the last supplemental budget appropriation, the finance committee gave us, the advisory board allocated funds in a supplemental appropriation to kind of move down the line in in different programs that we were able to utilize through them. And that has caused now over a month of training, I think it was 10 days of training that we've had half day, different staff in the treasurer's office and the school's office as well. We're moving towards the next level of that training and that ability of that kind of technical capability, kind of with an endpoint possibly going to cloud-based. So we have looked at it, it's the same line item as in the, it's coming from this, it's going to the same IT professional technical services line item in the budget that the last appropriation went to. And the bill we received for the next sort of round of infinite visions software and training is $35,484,58 with, so the total appropriation would be 125,458. However, Mr. Chairman, in the in the interim, we have had, I'll stop the screen share now, we have in our discussions with the treasurer's office downstairs, it looks like we need a fairly substantial appropriation as well from unappropriated balance to the tune of 250,000 for health insurance. Currently, the one of the health insurance line items, and Michelle may be able to kind of help color this a little, is negative to the tune of 141,051 dollars, forty cents. And that, so the recommendation we got from the county accountant was to transfer 250,000 from unappropriate balance to cover the shortfall and any June shortfall until we have time to really dig down into this budget driver. Part of it could be that we have a lot of new people coming in whose health insurance costs we haven't fully prepared for. For example, if someone comes in and takes a full family plan, top of the line, I'm really cheap and I'm single. So when you hired me, I was like the cheapest possible health insurance plan. I think Mike was very happy about that. But we kind of, we continue to, to look at these drivers. And, and this also importantly colors the infinite visions conversation, because a lot of the things we do with our financial software, sometimes there's a lag, was I was actually having this conversation with Mr. Fitzpatrick at the Aggie just this morning about how with a transfer he did, the software auto uploaded the entire person's salary and not the portion thereof. So as we continue to better use this software, I think it'll help us in a more real-time basis, be able to identify some of these drivers. But we, we do have that bill as well. So that will have to also go before you as an addition to the supplemental three supplemental budget requests we have there. So those are the four things before you now. If the finance committee would like to vote on them, we can put them into one package. And should there be further action needed next week, on the ninth, the day of, obviously, we're going, we're having a discussion with council regarding the supplemental appropriation surrounding premium pay. You know, that could come before you at your meeting before the advise, the full advisory board. But we'd like to get as knowing this is a snapshot in time, we'd like to get as many of these requests adjudicated by you and out to the wider advisory board today. And I'm happy to feel any questions you may have or attempt to.
Members have any questions?
Dr. Charles, I see your hand.
Go ahead, Dr.
Sorry. Yeah, I just, Bill, I just was curious what's in the miscellaneous equipment for the registry? And do we already have the backup for the printing? And did that already happen? I mean, I'm not very familiar with the cost of those things. That's just why I was asking.
If I may, that's a great question. And I will again, screen share and go over. These are, these are two letters I sent out with the packet that we got from the registry. Heavy duty shelving was, was one, the industrial shelving needs to be to restore numerous supplies, including toners, paper supplies, and forms of books. And the other was for printing, the printing needs of the registry will not be met for the balance of the fiscal year without this appropriation. It's really amazing how many documents they produce in a given year. There are 137,9260 documents reported to the registry of deeds in calendar year 2020. It's almost a 20% increase. So that it's, it's really due to, as we've sort of talked about, they're having a banner year, and that they just, they didn't anticipate the need to record that many documents and create that many books. And so this would cover that through their deeds excise.
Okay, that's all the documents covered, those letters.
Yes. So that, yeah, that would be, that's book printing itself. And there's, there's a number of physical recordings they do over and above the electronic ones.
Okay, all right. Do, how does that work in terms of invoices? When do those, when do we get the invoices for that sort of thing?
You know, Nancy, who was out today, could probably speak to it in a, in a more exact way. But I think he was just looking at the fact that there is he can project out that he's not going to finish that section, section of his budget in the red. I think he just kind of, they draw it down. And I think they were, they were being proactive, seeing that they wouldn't be able to fully draw down that line item. So they come over to Nancy, and Nancy approves. We do one set of purchasing for the entire county.
Okay. And I just said, this is another, I know we have to balance our budget, but what, what happens if you do just go up to the end of the year and then you're a little over? I mean, what do we do then?
I've jogged yours on the call. Maybe he can kind of speak to.
Yeah, I just, I just, the only reason I'm asking is I, it just surprise, it just seems like a lot of money for printing and shelving. That's why, that's why I asked. It's really, I mean, it's, maybe that's what it costs. Yeah.
I don't know if Joe could speak to exactly how, how we deal with the closeout of these various line items.
Maybe Joe's not on.
I see him. He may be on another line, but we can definitely circle back.
I just, I was just curious about it. It just seems like, I don't know, I guess the question is if we really spend the money, that's one thing. But it seems like maybe it would be hard to, I, spending $90,000 in 30 days for shelving and printing just seems like a lot to me. That's all.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, when it's appropriate, I can assess if, if wanted.
Sure. No, I think Dr. Childs would appreciate that register, please.
Yeah, that would be really helpful. I'm just curious about how that works.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, actually, Mr. Buckley was doing a very admirable job. Bottom line is you know, what we viewed as kind of a routine request, in part because it's been a busy year. For instance, in the printing section, Dr. Childs, and this was just last week, we have a balance of $27. And a lot of the information, I'm not going to relive the statistical information, but a tremendous amount of books still need to be printed and still need to be done. So a lot of it's a reflection on the significant document volume that has come in in line with what, what was in the appropriated budget. So it's, the books need to be bound. That's what we do here at the registry. So that's one item. And as far as the shelving, please note, this was a shelving, heavy duty shelving. We have a need right now to get open because of the COVID, and we'll be getting open on June 7. But this heavy duty shelving was destroyed by fire. The former county director was there when the adjuster said, yeah, you should replace it. I'm not seeking county monies on the replacement of the heavy duty shelving that was destroyed in the fire on February 6, 2021. What I'm doing is, because it's been a banner year statistically, which is why we need the money for the, to the books, we also, and it went, I'm not going to repeat what the advisory board at a couple of junctions, I was asked to talk about the deeds excise. The registry gets 40% and the county gets 60%. As of April 30, it was over 1.8 million was available to the registry in the dedicated deeds excise that gets collected every year. It's based on statute, chapter 64D. So the monies that are paying for this are coming from the tremendous amount of collections we will be sending over, you know, the fiscal, the the monthly year ends, May 31, there's statutorily, you have 10 days to get all the monies collected and accounted for. And we will do that, I assure all the finance committee people. But May's numbers were tremendous as well. And again, the county's getting monies from that, thankfully, and so is the registry. Again, most of it goes to the state. But the 60-40 split that they talk about, the roughly 10% that, that we get to keep as a county, 60% is the counties, 40% is the registry, based on chapter 64D, section 12. In May, it's looking like that number, just for the registry alone, is over 200,000. And for the county share, over 300,000. So I just want to assure you, the shelving, it's a need. It was destroyed in the fire. And we have books, supplies, a lot of things that are in public spaces that we are now trying, we have to, we have to get open. And we will be opened Monday, the 7th, the way everything's going with the COVID restrictions being lifted and and, you know, getting to back to some form of normal. I hope Dr. Childs, or that answers the question. If not, please ask me furthermore.
Well, I understand you have plenty of money, but I would really like, I mean, I just was thinking if it's, if it was shelving that was destroyed in the fire, isn't that covered under our insurance?
Well, I hope so. And I know the former county director was, you know, paperwork was sent over to him, sent over to purchasing, they were pursuing a claim. But in the meantime, and again, anyone that's dealt with insurance claims, whether professionally or even on your house, knows sometimes that check doesn't come in, or they may have questions on the claim. So in the meantime, we need to get shelving up. And honestly, I view it as a registry expense. It should come from the registry budget at this time in order so we can get it going. There are contracts, I know the commissioner's asked, and we're, you know, rightly so, you know, hey, can, can this be done off the state contract? So you can get the shelving up, you know, relatively immediately after the approvals. So.
So I have another question about that. If it was already ordered, was the appropriation not already charged?
No, we, we can't, on the shelving, we cannot make an order. The commissioners were asking how quickly it could be done. They were well aware, and, and, you know, and I appreciated the comments when we had the hearing, we had two hearings, one on the books on April 21, the one on the shelving, April 28. We all recognize, we can't order shelving until there's an appropriation. So, you know, we cannot by law order shelving until this money is, is, is put into place.
But I thought you said that the former county director did order the shelving to be replaced and was making a claim.
No, no, what happened was there was a meeting, I, I was present at the meeting when, when the adjuster for the insurance company said, oh, yeah, the shelving should be replaced. It was destroyed in the fire. We're authorizing it. So no, the county director has been involved as far as dealing with the insurance company on behalf of the county in Norfolk, putting claims in and putting what's been destroyed. But to my knowledge, no monies have been received back from the insurance company. And, and, and I'm not seeking it, you know, it's been a banner year, as has been stated by Mr. Buckley. Statistically, it's been a banner year as far as receipts coming in, not only the deeds excise, but also the transaction fees. So no, the county director was involved, I guess, in, you know, like, the county director's the county director. That's, that's their job. I tried to run the registry. They're pursuing the claim, Dr. Childs, but until, right now, we have to get shelving up. And in order to get shelving up, we have to get an appropriation, which is the basis of this. So it has to, you know, get approved by the advisory board, so that there's money in the item, so that then we can then order shelving. You know, the county director wouldn't be ordering shelving, especially, you know, why should he? It really involves the registry.
Okay, so I guess respectfully, I understand that you need the shelving. But I also, our job as representing our communities is to make sure we're putting forth fiduciary responsibility for the dollars in the county. And, and if we can get this money for the insurance claim, rather than expending the money out of county monies, that is important. So I think that would be my question on this. And if we are going to appropriate it to buy the shelving, I would want to make sure that the insurance claims money went back to repay the county for that.
I don't, I don't think by taking this vote and getting us operational, that, I agree with you, you, you know, the insurance companies, as somebody who has sued a number of insurance companies, they're not easy to deal with. I hope the county gets as much money as they get, you know, very similar to the winter damage claims at the registry, when the registry got destroyed. I hope the county gets as much money as they can. But I don't think that should hold up in appropriation, especially, you know, by statute, we have chapter 64D monies that are collected via deeds excise that are specifically for registry operations. So we're not asking it to come out of the county fund, so to speak. It's coming out of the deeds excise that is the registry's share pursuant to 64D, section 12.
Those are county funds, register?
Funds come in respectfully, I guess. All I'm looking at is just trying to keep the registry operational. There's a need and would appreciate people's support in having the registry meet a need that's, that's needed. And, and it's not something that we had control of. There was a fire, thankfully, it was fire and other first responders, Dedham Police did a great job. And unfortunately, the heavy duty shelving was destroyed in the fire.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Connors, sorry, I was.
That we support the supplemental appropriation as presented and pay attention to and direct Commissioners Collins, Shay, Chairman Shay, Peter Collins and Dick Stady, to understand the fact that we would like to see the insurance money back into the budget when it is received to support this adjustment.
Mr. Chairman.
Please.
I agree with the statement by Mr. Connors, and I think we should support this to get it moving as, as the register has stated.
Mr. Beckerman?
I would agree.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Recommend? I'm sorry, Mr. Buckley, did?
Mr. Chairman, if I could recognize Chairman Shay.
Oh, sure.
I just, I just, before Elizabeth Child, or someone referred to Joe Diaria, but I do believe he's on. I just, before we take any, before you take a vote, I just wanted to see if he had anything to add to this. Joe?
Yes, I'm sorry. I had walked away for a minute, and I guess there was.
That's fine. That's fine. I sensed, I knew you, I knew you came back. I just, do you, do you, do you follow, do you see where we're going here or where the advisory board is going? We already approved these items again as 21st of April and the 28th.
Right.
The explanation hasn't changed on our side, anyway.
No, the only thing I would mention is on the shelving. No, the only thing I would mention is on the shelving, the money is coming from the register's deeds excise money, not from the county. So the insurance money, to me, I think would go back to the deeds excise fund.
Right.
Insurance money came in, not go back to the county.
That's what I wanted to be sure of.
I saw it, I mean, doesn't seem like it's a major issue.
As far as, Mr. Chairman, if appropriate, Register O'Donnell again.
Please, go ahead, Register.
Believe me, the monies, as far as I'm concerned, that particularly amount of monies, I just want to get up in operational, that's my statutory and elected duty. So as far as the insurance monies, believe me, if it's a $50,000 windfall to the county side and have the county keep it, I'm not looking to get reimbursed on it. I just hope the county, as part of its overall claim, holds, you know, I've dealt with insurance companies, they're difficult to deal with. I hope you get as much money as you can. But I appreciate what the county account set as far as deeds excise. But I mean, it can go back to the county share as far as that goes, if that makes everything easier.
Chairman, I'd like to move the question.
Please, is there a motion on the floor?
Motion made.
Second, Mr. Beckerman, or call the roll, Mr. Baldiff?
Aye.
Mr. Beckerman?
Aye.
Dr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Connors?
Aye.
So we'll be recommending this to the full advisory board next week. Thank you. The next would be?
Sorry, just while we're still on the subject, to be clear, it would probably be cleaner as well if the commissioners just voted on that for those four items, again, as one group, to be sent to the advisory board as well. Because we usually, just like a board of selectmen and a finance committee both make recommendations. At this time, it might be prudent to recommend those four supplemental budget items. Do you, Mr. Chair, Shay?
All right, you including the ones that were done last night by the agricultural school board?
That is a transfer, that's a different agenda item.
So I only see three, but I.
I will read them, Mr. Chair, as I shuffle through. The motion would read a FY21 fourth supplemental appropriation of $40,000 for registry of deeds, printing and binding, $50,000 for miscellaneous equipment, 135,428 for most professional and technical line items related to infinite visions, and 250,000 for appropriation for healthcare costs. I apologize, my phone is ringing.
Okay. Commissioner Stady and Commissioner Collins. Do you understand this fourth supplementary appropriations?
Yes.
Okay, is Commissioner Stady on?
I'm here.
Okay, so you're saying, we're saying that we want to include this with the other three?
Yes.
Which we previously did.
I understand, why, Mr. Chairman, why are we voting something that we already voted? I'm confused.
Sir, Mr. Chair, you voted, in the previous iterations, you voted to add this to the supplemental budget?
Yes.
Request, so this is the final, so you've added four or five pieces and you're just taking one vote on all four to move forward to the advisory board.
So technically, truthfully, William, our motion should be to amend the previous vote by the board, right?
That's, yeah.
As you say that. We should be amending the motion of a previous vote of the board to include those items and then with the sum total being whatever it is.
Right.
All right, so I would, I would be okay with that, Mr. Chairman. That we amend a previous motion of supplemental appropriation to include those items as outlined by Mr. Buckley and with the total amount to be as recorded.
Okay, let me ask this. In the spirit of accuracy, so it goes to, it goes from 125,458?
To 375,458.
Where is the sheet on the 250,000, like all the other supplemental sheets?
We received it 15 minutes before the meeting.
Okay, all right, I still want a sheet.
I'm good, not that good.
Okay, that's all right, I still want a sheet to go into the minutes of the meeting. And if Chairman Riordan agrees with it, I think it's important to do it today to save further, you know, we can still talk about it on the night, but it would be better if we got it through today. Okay, that confused me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And that is for increasing healthcare costs, I just want to make it sure. Okay, I have no objection if we're back in a regular meeting, if our meeting, we're still in it. If one of the commissioners wants to make the motion, I will move first.
I, I'm sorry, I thought I made that motion.
To amend, all right, we can.
I'm sorry, I thought I had made that motion.
All right.
I have all the numbers in front of me, I would make the motion that we amend our previous vote that included previous supplemental appropriations to include a new amount of $250,000?
Correct.
Cost and that the total be?
375,458.
Thank you very much, so moved.
A second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve an additional supplementary appropriation to go to the advisory board of 250,000 to the other four items previously discussed for the increase in healthcare costs to be forwarded today. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, on the subject of FY21 supplemental budgets, I know you, Commissioner Stady and Commissioner Connors, had the benefit of being on the trustees last evening. And again, as we tip the cap to Rick Fitzpatrick for working on his closeout. Rick is here to answer questions, but just very briefly, it's important to introduce in this meeting, the fact that we do not have a supplemental budget request from the school at this time. And Rick has been working doggedly with a tremendous, and I throw on a wall pole scoop many persons have myself and Commissioner Stady, as he nods his head, a very long time educator understands there's just a number of factors that are contributing to the difficulties with closeout. It's, I don't want to belabor you with cliches, but obviously there's questions about school lunch, a drop in transportation costs, numerous staff members moving in and out, going on to FMLA, leaving. So all this has just created a tremendous amount of uncertainty. And in the discussions with Interim Director Labdini, myself and Rick, we went, you know, very deliberatively as to whether or not the trustees should bring to the commissioners and the finance committee a request for a supplemental appropriation at the meeting on June the 9th. And I think, again, working conservatively and prudently, we do not have a request at this time because it's really important for the action of the closeout to happen. But also importantly, statutorily, a school district cannot close its books in the red. So as a number of factors continue to evolve, I know I did send Mr. Riordan's, I'm sorry, Mr. Fitzpatrick's presentation to the advisory board, to the finance committee. There is no action that needs to be taken at this time, but as, you know, working really doggedly with Joe DiOria, who is in charge of the financial closeouts for the county, we may need to call the finance committee and the advisory board back in July, in early July. Obviously, we won't make it kind of personal, obviously, it would be a Zoom, given where people are in the height of summer. But that may be necessary to speak to their needs to close their books in this unprecedented year. But again, we really came to the conclusion that it would be imprudent to try to spitball a number to the finance committee and to the advisory board to say, we think we need about 350 for this one year for closeout. And we thought it's very important to come, once the books are closed, with a concrete number, if that number exists to you. I think that Rick has been taking a number of measures in the final weeks to really tighten up expenditures and the like. And right now, it's kind of fluid in a few hundred thousand dollars, which could go one way or another depending. If memory serves, I believe he's still waiting for a couple of towns to pay him, which they often do at the very, very end of the year.
Mr. Chairman, I interrupt a little bit because I believe you're doing a good job, but we're getting, I just, I wanted to say, Rick did a good job last night. Basically, the parameters were a shortfall anywhere from 150 to even higher. I think we're in that gray zone. He's working hard, you're working hard, we're all working hard to get that number down. My question, for the benefit of the finance committee, is can we make some kind of a motion next week? We have the advisory board meeting coming up. Can we do a tentative, something like not to exceed a certain amount? Or what happens, we can't finish in the red, as you said, all right? And we're not getting out of the meeting. So what happens if we don't get those numbers crunched with no fault until maybe like the end of June? What happens then? That's my question, what happens then?
That's a great question. I don't know if the advisory board can pre-appropriate funds. But I know, I believe that the closeout, it obviously doesn't have to be done by June 1st, it has to be done by closing the books, which is mid-July.
Yeah.
I don't know, Joe D., could you speak to if the advisory board can kind of pre-approve a number? I don't believe they can, but I'm not familiar with the statute.
I was hoping we could, that's what I was thinking.
I'm not aware of that. You know, this is unprecedented thing, so it's nowhere in any statute really regarding that. And I'll have the books closed by July 20th at the latest, that's usually when I have them done. So somewhere between the 15th and the 20th, we'll have the number. So we can go from there. One possibility, maybe this is just, is the advisory board meeting next week not to close the meeting? Keep it open? You know, pending, you know, come July, so then technically the vote will have happened retroactively in June. So we can adjust the books then, I mean, that's a possibility.
Right, there's an option, okay. That's why I wanted to bring it up, you know, thank you, okay, that would help.
Mr. Chairman, if you will?
Please.
I just want to comment that I looked over the material that Mr. Fitzpatrick submitted, the reasoning for the things occurring, and it all seems perfectly understandable in this time. I also understand the difficulty in closing out early. And I would suggest that the board stick with this. And if necessary, we meet on the 30th to finalize a supplemental if it really need be. I don't think it would be appropriate to do it afterwards, although I don't understand all the statutes, but it certainly could be done on the 30th or the 29th or some other date like that. So that allows sufficient time because the situation is definitely fluid. But he's always presented, he's always presented good information to us. We have had supplementals for the Aggie School, numbers of times in the years to square up things. And I think its custodianship of these numbers has been excellent. So I think we need to stick with this.
That's a good suggestion, Phil.
I agree.
Okay, there's no action needed at this time then, other than the good suggestion of keeping the meeting open at the end of June the 9th.
And Chair Shay, if I may. Is there an opportunity to get clarification from council as to the appropriate course here, just to make sure?
Sure, I can inquire, but.
And make every effort to get it. I, well, yes, the answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, you all set, Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to capital then, I don't know, Michelle or Bill, which one of you is going to walk through this? It was interesting to read up on it.
Michelle and I can tag team it, but again, the document is, the only change in the document is the inclusion of the capital at the request that we removed from the operating budget of the requests of the finance committee and the assent of the commissioners. So the plan is really unchanged. Otherwise, we do have Matt Abrahams, who's been patient on the call to answer any specific questions, but it's the same document that we've walked through. And we just need a commissioners and finance committee vote, which again, push it to the entire advisory board.
The finance committee members have questions of the capital plan?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Please, go ahead, Mr. Beckerman.
One question I have is what is the, only because I wasn't involved in the early discussions, what's the threshold that constitutes a capital item?
We, we've been discussing that, Eric, in the Norfolk County policy proposals. And the number that is currently being talked about is 5,000.
5,000, okay, because I did see a couple of items on the capital. I think there was one for 2,000 or 2,500 out there.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if there was a specific number, you know, I didn't know how, how the smaller items that might have come out of the budget and been put, that are technically capital items, but I don't know that they need to necessarily be put on the capital plan. I guess that's a gray area that we need to discuss probably in the future. But if it's under that 5,000, then we have to take those and figure out somewhere else to put them, want to list somewhere.
I think that'd be a good thing to put on our agenda, maybe Chairman Riordan for the next or another finance committee meeting with the Norfolk County policies is to really have a conversation about the, what value should capital be? And what below that should be within the operating budget? And also, it could be both amount, but also time, you know, an item that's, maybe it needs to be for at least a year or two years or five years, whatever we think is, we could do it with those two parameters. But that's probably something we should define clearly in the capital that goes into the policies.
And that would be, once we have the recommendations from them, Beth, or?
That's probably, that probably would be the easiest way to have the conversation, we could get the recommendation and just flag that piece in particular as something to discuss. And the commissioners will have read them, I would think, and they would, but we might want to weigh in. The FinCom might want to weigh in on that, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah.
And sir, Mr. Chair, that is right on the forefront of the Abrahams Group's mind. We've discussed that the last few weeks. I view this capital really as like a transitional capital year. We're talking about next year, moving it to the fall like the towns. But I know the Abrahams Group wants the recommendations to have something concrete in there about thresholds and benchmarking of really what constitutes, like what trips the wider, you know, moving into the wider capital budget. So that will be a fully ready for prime time recommendation once they make it. And I know Mark was looking to speak to Dr. Childs and other folks and get all your input ahead of the, ahead of the recommendation, not after it. So we want those all baked in.
Right, I think Joe and I have both done that, and I think Mark's got a pretty solid draft, so yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'll throw my two cents in early. I do agree with all the discussion that's occurred here, and I think it's good, especially the, Mr. Buckley's comment about this being a transitional capital. And I really do believe it should be in the fall, after the fiscal year is closed out. But keeping it brief, I think 5,000 is a fairly small amount, it's not 1975 anymore. And definitely a discussion about the duration of the item. So I'm an advocate of actually moving that number up, not handcuffing department heads for small purchases. And obviously, it's got to be a durable item and there should be a timeframe associated with it, surely more than a year. And I think the discussion is good. I think the items that are in this, in this capital budget have been reviewed and looked at at length in the past. And I suggest that the finance committee move along with this.
Thank you. Any other members with comments or questions? Is there a motion for a recommendation?
Chairman, I'll make the motion to recommend capital plan as presented.
There a second? Okay, I'll call the roll, Mr. Baldiff?
Aye.
Mr. Beckerman?
Aye.
Dr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Connors?
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Moving on now, and I'll refer this to Mr. Buckley, because he sent out the packet. Bill, I didn't see the minutes. Phil, I didn't see the minutes of the last meeting in there.
Yeah, we were waiting on them from Phil. I don't think they are ready for prime time as yet. We put that on as a placeholder.
Okay, so is there a motion to table until the next meeting?
They're moved.
Mr. Beckerman.
Seconded.
Carl. Mr. Baldiff.
Aye.
Beckerman.
Aye.
Dr. Childs.
Aye.
Mr. Connors.
Aye.
Are there any other topics that any members of the finance committee wish to introduce at this time? There are none, I entertain a motion to adjourn the finance committee meeting, to return to the commissioners.
There's some move.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, excuse me, Mr. Connors, your recommendation.
Adjourn till the 9th at what time?
The 9th will be at 6:00 PM. The executive committee will post a meeting at 5:45.
Yeah, that would be the motion then.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Okay, this is to adjourn, Mr. Baldiff.
Aye.
Mr. Beckerman.
Aye. She said aye.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Connors.
Aye.
All right, so the meeting is adjourned, and hopefully we don't have to do too many Zoom meetings. Thank you to you, Chair Shay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. The county commissioners' meeting is continuing. We're at item number 11. Payroll and expense warrants for approval.
Dick, if you can read them, because I'm still driving, that'd be great.
Hey, give me a second, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta jump screens here. I had the, I was on finance, give me one second, I got it.
On the screen.
Yeah, okay, I got it, I got it, I got it. Just trying to open my warrant up. So move the following warrant list of 6221. Number one, 21-48 payroll county, $134,284.60.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Move warrant 21-48 parentheses, 24.1, close parentheses, school payroll, $57,207.27.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye, it is unanimous.
Aye.
Warrant list 21-48, school payroll, $335,609.81.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, it is unanimous, next.
Move the county expense of June 1st, 21, the amount of $20,250.37.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye, it is unanimous.
Move county expense of May 4th, 21A, the amount of $41.88.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Aye.
Last one, move Wallaston Recreation Facility credit card payment of June 1, of 21, the amount of $40,910. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, it is unanimous. That concludes the payroll and expense warrants?
Yes.
Okay. Number 12, bid openings, we have none. Number 13, contract awards, we have none. Why don't we jump to? Well, no, let's go right. Number 14, report on the American Rescue Act plan of 2021.
Three, Mr. Chair, just a point of information. We did have, Phil did have the FinCom meeting minutes done, but we did not get them in the scramble to get them into the packet. So they'll be tabled, but they were completed on time, which is an important clarification. On the ARPA funds, continuing to have good conversations, letters starting to hit town managers. Spoke with Norfolk's town manager yesterday. And she wanted me to report back to you, Blythe, very, very nice and capable administrator. Her gratitude at the deliberative way the commissioners are moving, trying to make sure that we use, we go after this money and, and the most deliberate way possible, and, and looking at the different pitfalls to ways in which we might transfer some of the funds and retain some. And, and her, her sense was, from her community, one, they, they chose not to send us any sort of resolution. And two, they're, they're still trying to get their hands around their own portion. So she really appreciated that, the footing you're taking, and the way you're, the letters you've sent, and the way you're, you were acting. So, so that was a, a good piece of information. We did have a, a meeting with the Secretary of Administration Finance Staff, who do, who, who are in charge of federal funding. Not a lot of new information. They did, however, say there is a movement afoot to dialogue with the Treasury to talk about the way in which funds can be transferred. As it stands now, we, we have all the, as you know, as I've said many, many times, we have all the liability if, if we take a portion for ourselves. And we're working on dialoguing with our federal partners to see if that, if that can be changed. Because the state, which is acting as a pass-through for the local money, doesn't have any reporting requirements for that local money. And so there may be an opportunity there to really alleviate a large amount of the administrative burden on us and allow us to continue to aggressively pursue the projects that the commissioners have on their radar. And finally, we continue, we'll probably meet with administration finance next week to talk about the possibility of the state helping in addressing, say, courthouses or other capital needs through the state's ARPA money, and, and allowing us to transfer the, our, our county share to our constituent communities. That was something I brought up last week. The wrinkle in that, if, if you may have been following it, is the legislature yesterday, in a supplemental budget appropriation, put in language that said the state's share of the ARPA funds are now subject to appropriation. And that just highly complicates the, the possible process of working with the state, using state funds to address county facilities, because all, all of those appropriations will be subject to legislative approval first. So obviously, the governor is pushing back on the idea of legislative approval for his 5.3 billion in the segregated state funds, and we'll see how that plays out as well. So those are, those are just the three new pieces of information I have today.
Thank you. Any questions relative to the American Rescue Plan, commissioners?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I know this meeting's dragging on, but you know, I'll make it quick. First, thank you, Billy, for your continued work in this regard. Second, we all want answers, and it seems like every week we get further and further complicated with different opinions, different advisories. No one's fault, it's just you get so many government agencies coming at you that you've got the left and the right and everybody in between. That being said, with all due respect, a couple of things I'd like to see if you could maybe look into. One is, again, the issue of broadband improvement for our Aggie school. I was on a call yesterday, truthfully, in negotiations, and it was terrible. It was terrible. Certainly, if we can do anything to help out internet or broadband in that school, which is our jewel, I think would be good to do. Secondly, the other thing was that I know it's tricky, because obviously, according to Mr. Doria and others, we've had a good year in terms of revenue, and yet the Aggie is staggering in terms of revenue loss, as you noted, and as Rick Fitzpatrick noted, for a variety of reasons. So I'm wondering if you could segregate that. I'm wondering if it's worth a try to apply some of those funds, perhaps for revenue offset, because there was an entity within our county that did lose revenue, just a thought. Who knows? I mean, who knows? One person might say you can, one person will say you can't. I'm just putting it out there. I'm probably spitballing at this time, you know? And then the third thing was, I just asked politely, have you had any response to our letter that the commissioner sent out, other than what you noted? From the letter we sent out, did you get any feedback? Just curious.
That was, that was the only piece right now. I, I did have a good conversation with Franklin as well, who get it and thought that it was helpful.
Okay, all right, we'll get there eventually. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 15, Norfolk County Agricultural High School transfer request. In your packet dated June 1st to the board, it's repeated, of course, relative to year-end payroll transfers, as well as the votes of the Norfolk County High School Board of Trustees, based on last night's meeting and some backup material supplied by RAC. I believe that it's necessary that we take these transfers, correct?
Right, yes.
And then they go into the system.
Right. So I was, go ahead, I'm sorry.
These were approved last night, commissioners, as you all know, because we were all there. Actually, all five of us were there, so. Let me read the order. Rick's presentation is chatted to. Norfolk County Agricultural High School vote to transfer funds. This was what was voted last night, and we need to repeat it as commissioners. That the Norfolk County Agricultural High School Board of Trustees, at the recommendation of the business manager and the approval of the superintendent director, appropriated, appropriating some of $154,686 as followed. Transferred to, and all of the numbers of their temporary wages, $100,000. Second item, transferred to health and medical and health professional salaries, $54,000. And transferred to the third one is guidance, professional salary $686. This transfer has come from the following area. Library professional salaries, custodial 53,000, custodial professional salaries, 66,868,000. And food service, professional salaries, 35,000. So this, these transfers are within their own budget, and all of the backup is given. And we heard the presentation last night, necessary for us to approve this. Any discussion before we vote, commissioners?
I wanted to make a motion, if you want, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that we approve the following transfer of funds in a total amount of $154,686 to be transferred to temporary agents, medical and health professional salaries, and guidance professional salaries, and the amounts delineated by the chair at this meeting. And the said funds to be transferred from library professional salaries, custodial professional salaries, and food service professional salaries, again, as outlined in the memo and as read by the chair. Said amount, $154,686.
Do we have a second? Okay, I'll, I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, two to zero, thank you. Moving right along, number 16, capital budget vote. We did, it was taken previously. Do we need to take it?
If you would, just one more time. Because we've added the finance committee's recommendation, we, we pulled out those small numbers from the operating budget.
Okay, do you have the verbiage in front of you? I don't see it in my package.
Michelle, do, just want to give them the, the number.
Yeah, let me, let me pull it out, just add it. Too many papers, Bill.
And we, good thing we're building a solar field, because we killed a lot of trees this month. I thought that was funny.
You're trying.
The total of the capital, the FY '22 change to $1,109,895. And the changes were, I don't have it on the separate report, but we took money from engineering. I think I sent the email, hold on, let me see, I can tell you exactly what we did. Sorry, hold, hold on one second, I apologize.
We do this next week?
No, I have it right here.
Okay.
I have it right here, I'm sorry.
I got the attachment that.
It's 54,000, isn't it?
I'm just looking for the right one, there were four of them, right, William?
Yes.
Thanks, just trying to find the right one, that's all. And my computer's not cooperating. Excel takes forever to load up.
I can't find the email.
The total is 1,109,895.
Bill, do you have the email that I sent to you and to Matt this morning that outlines what was changed?
You know something? I'd feel better if we could see this next week. I'd like a, a motion right in front of us, and we'll.
Okay.
Print it out, and then we'll pass it next week. Is that all right with you, Commissioner State?
Yeah, I agree, I do, no offense.
No problem, I, I understand.
No problem.
109, but I, I, I just want a piece of paper.
I'm with you, Joe, that's fine.
Do we have a motion, continue item 16 till next week, capital budget vote?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor, aye, thank you. Supplemented budget requests, I assume, we did, we did do it earlier.
That's correct.
When we broke away from the county board, okay.
Right.
Number 18, report of the county director.
Commissioners, I have nothing more to add. Everything that I had to update you on has already been discussed today.
Excellent.
Whoa, what about the infogram or something?
Informational, so you would have that, but that wasn't part of our agenda, so I didn't want to speak to it.
Oh, okay, okay.
That is something that came in yesterday from our law office, Michelle McNulty's office, regarding the emergency law, emergency paid sick leave. I would add this to the agenda next week to be discussed in more detail.
Okay, yeah.
And I think next week, we'll be ready to talk about when we're going to return to live meetings, but I don't think we're ready today. But by next week, I think, Michelle and I talked briefly this morning, we'll wrap it all up.
Yes, I'll get to it, Mr. Chairman, okay, I want to discuss that. Well, I guess the appropriate time will be next week, I guess.
Well, hopefully we'll hear a little more, but I, I mean, we're ready.
I'm just wondering if, if a Zoom option is still possible in the event of travel or illness, if someone can't make a meeting, if we can Zoom in, that's all I'm looking.
I, I, it's supposed to be some, some verbiage to that. It's supposed to be in the governor's message, which is, what, the 15th?
Yes, yeah, yeah, so.
And then after that, we'll set the date, but if we want to talk next week, we can.
Okay, that's fine.
By next week, we'd have more information on that, but we may not have until the 14th at midnight, so.
Okay, I know.
We're talking about the state, that's very probable.
Well, we'll learn it.
Well, yeah. Okay, number 19, emergency items, topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate would be discussed. Do we have anything else?
All right, just, yeah, real quick, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So we are, we're having council come in next week on the issue of the.
Bonuses.
Pandemic pay, right. We also need to talk to our other attorney on the solar project, in light of a couple of things that we've received. I mean, wouldn't it be a bad idea to get him in? I think we should just need to talk about that a little bit, I'm concerned.
So we could have an agenda, we could have an executive session and use two causes.
I think Bill.
One is litigation, of course, and the other is the, whether we need to bargain the, the bonuses.
Yeah, if he's available.
All right, I, I, I would say we'll inquire, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
But those are two different things.
No, next week, hold on, just let me finish. Next week's a big, big week for us. We have a meeting, and then we have the advisory board. So I don't want a crowded agenda too much either, Mr. Chair. I think we could delay it a week, but I want to put it out there as a thought, that's all.
Okay.
That's all, you know?
But Dick, what, what was just said was, we can, you know, maybe get a legal opinion on two different items. They're two different attorneys.
Oh, I know that, I'm, I'm sorry.
Oh, I know, yeah. I know, Peter, hey, Peter, I know. I, I don't want to, but I'm saying.
Sure.
I personally think we should talk to our other attorney on the matter of the solar thing as soon as possible, that's all.
Okay, yeah, I agree. I wanted to jump back to, I wanted to jump back to item nine, though. though, um, and I will make that motion that we, um, based upon the sentiment from the finance committee, that we initiate a, a hiring freeze for non-essential positions. So essential positions can still be hired.
Yeah.
Excluding necessary temporary seasonal employment until fiscal year '22. So that's really just July 1st, but any temporary employees that, that need to be hired, we can do that. This is just a hiring freeze on non-essential positions.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. That's till July 1st, right? Till July 1st.
Just till July 1st, right.
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair. Okay, all, motion made in second. All in favor? Sure.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, um, last call. I will attempt to get that meeting on Stoughton Court next week. I can't tell you the date. It won't be Wednesday. Yeah. No, please. And I'll inform everyone. I'm gonna ask Nancy to make the calls. There's five calls to be made, and then, uh, I will post it, and that way, if all three commissioners show up, that's fine, but. I don't want to, I don't want to hold up a meeting if. No, we're not gonna hold it up. But I'd like to. I, I, I gotta corral these people I'm talking about. Two engineers. Yeah. Check with Clerk Hughes and, and, and Judge O'Malley, McGowan, myself, Robbie, Michelle, and Nancy, and the commissioners. Okay. I, 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 there's, there's too many moving parts and, uh. Right. I think if I get everyone in one room, we might be able to. So that's my extra task next week, but we'll do it. Okay. Anything else? I have a motion adjourned? Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. All right.
Okay, thanks, everyone.